Nine fifty, nine fifty-five.
All right, it's nine o'clock. I'll call to order the September twenty-seventh meeting of the Slayne County Commission. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if we could all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence. It's now time for our citizen input. Where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of approval of public forum agenda, approval of patent construction contract, approval of accounts payable, approval of adoption of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three cafeteria plan, approval of payroll, approval of the county commission minutes of September twentieth, approval of post-rock water district grant agreement, approval of the U.S. imaging contract, approval of St. John's C.I.N.G. grant agreement, approval of the city abling fire talk group authorization. Any items on that consent agenda that the commissioners wish to address?
I move approval. Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Now go to presentations. Item one.
National Weather Service Storm Ready Recognition with Chance Hayes, Warning Coordination Meteorologist with NWS Wichita, Kansas.
Good morning, Mr. Hayes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you all for taking the time to allow us to speak this morning to recognize Slayne County. On behalf of the National Weather Service, Vanessa Pierce and myself, we'd like to recognize Slayne County and the work that Michelle and Natasha has done, and Hannah, the predecessor, as well as Bernie, to become, make Slayne County a storm-ready county. There's a lot of hoops that they have to go through in regards to the National Weather Service recognizing them as a storm-ready community. I have to have appropriate hazardous weather plans in place to ensure that the information is being received in a timely fashion and also disseminating to the citizens of the county to ensure that they are aware of all the hazards that are moving into the county. And that's very important to Vanessa and myself, because Slayne County is our second-largest county when it comes to population. So it's very important to us out of the National Weather Service Office in Wichita to ensure that the citizens are getting the information and they know how to act upon that information whenever hazardous weather is moving in. And it's not just important also for Slayne County, it's also important for all those locations downstream to the east, be it Dickinson County, over towards Junction City and Topeka, because the information that is coming out of Slayne County is very important to them so that they can start preparing for the hazardous weather moving into their area. Michelle and Natasha do a fantastic job keeping us informed what's happening in the county so that we can share that information with the citizens and also through our broadcast media, be it KSL, KINA, and then also through the television media. So we'd like to recognize Michelle and Natasha for their efforts to become a storm-ready county. And so, on behalf of the National Weather Service, we'd like to pass this off to them. So, thank you.
Justin, can you help me hang it up?
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks.
So, Vanessa?
I will say, Mr.
Anything you'd like to add? No? Any questions?
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Hayes, that we, I speak for the commission, I believe, that we are very pleased with our emergency management office, the job Michelle does and her staff, and we're pleased to accept this presentation.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support of the emergency management program.
Question of Michelle, where are you going to put your sign?
Wherever Justin and Darren let me.
I just want to echo Jim's comments that we, as the commission, we truly do know what goes on over there at the, at the commission, at the emergency preparedness division, and we're very proud of them. And it's nice to see them get the recognition from national sources that they are also recognized as doing a wonderful job. So, congratulations to them. We're proud to have you.
Thank you. I've been doing this since, I've been here since nineteen ninety-five and worked with Gail Ailes when I first got here. So I've been working with Slayne County for quite some time, and I'm excited because as I'm getting ready to move on out of my career, this is a great achievement for me because Slayne County is so vital to us in the weather field and those folks on off to these. So, once again, thank you very much for your support of the program.
Thank you. Okay, well now I'll move into action items. Item number one.
Health Department Fiber Project twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director.
Morning, Brad.
Good morning. This request in front of you this morning is for the installation, termination, and testing of a twelve-count strand of fiber optic cable that will run between the Health Department and the Slayne County data center. The cost, we have a, we received a refined estimate on the cost of this from when I wrote this RFA. The RFA had seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars in it as the cost, and based on some, some work that we've done in this past week, that cost has come down to twelve thousand one hundred dollars, and it's primarily because of the path that the new jail fiber is going to take. We saw an opportunity to sort of consolidate these fiber runs, and that resulted in a, in a lower-cost estimate for this. The fiber optic cable will be used to connect the Health Department or any other department that moves into that building to the county server room, providing access to applications and computing resources. Currently, the networks are separate. The plan is to merge the networks via the fiber connection that we, that will be installed. Health Department users will then access their computer services from the Slayne County data center. This change will save money and staff resources over time. Instead of paying for, for example, separate internet connections and other computer-based services, these will be consolidated when this, when this fiber optic cable is laid. There are other savings of scale that will be realized as well by merging the Health Department network into the Slayne County network. Some examples are email security, Office 365 licensing, backup. Backup will be, will be done at our data center and through a different application. The alternatives for action today are to prove the request is prevented, or we can simply choose to leave the status quo, and everything continues to work. Staff recommends approving the project in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars with Nextech installing the fiber. Merging the two networks will save time and resources by removing duplication of effort over time. An ongoing cost for the computer services at the Health Department, Slayne County will own this fiber, and I think that's important to understand. Won't be leased, it'll be owned by us. Now, the risk to us in that case is, is if something happens to it, gets cut, we're responsible for repairing it. So, it's a trade-off. This particular project was not budgeted, is not a budgeted item. Staff recommends paying for this expense from the IT self-insurance fund, which is a budgeted item in the twenty-twenty-three budget. The technology self-insurance account balance is one hundred and ninety-one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. After payment of this expense, the fund will be left with a balance of one hundred eighty-seven thousand thirty-one dollars. That's my report. Any questions?
I'd like to mention, this is, two meetings in a row, department heads have come up here and brought us lower bids than what was originally offered, and I hope there's a trend starting here that continues throughout, but.
This was truly an opportunity that was unseen and presented itself as a result of another project, so.
Brad, you mentioned that this is not budgeted in the twenty-twenty-two budget, but the actual project is going to take place in twenty-twenty-two?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay.
The, the, the IT self-insurance fund is a budgeted item in twenty-twenty-two.
Right. I get that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions of Brad? Bring it to the commission.
Public.
Public. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll, now bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this project in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars with Nextech installing the fiber.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded that we approve the Health Department Fiber Project twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Bid award for purchase of three twenty-twenty-three Sheriff's Office marked SUVs, twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen with Sheriff Roger Solden.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Well, I hate to burst your bubble about the low bids. This is the first of three requests I've got for vehicles. We were looking to replace three of our marked patrol cars that are, that are used in the field. They're, one of them's a twenty-seventeen Ford and two eighteen Fords that have between one hundred and sixty-five thousand and two hundred and eleven thousand miles on them. Those, those road, theirs are still on the road, and we expect them to be about five thousand miles a month. They'll, they'll add to them till they're gone. We put out bids, they did get, we did get sealed bids back. September sixth, they were open. We had two bids, one from Marshall Motors of Slayna, and one from Serve Emergency Vehicles Van Dover, Kansas, with Ann, with Serve being the lowest bid at a hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And that includes trading in the three used vehicles. We've got a couple alternatives for action. One is to purchase the vehicles at the lowest bid. The others returned to us with some further instructions. We are looking at probably eight to twelve-week time before these vehicles would be delivered, and then they'd have another three or four weeks for installation. So it may push this into next year, like what happened last year. But that's, the vehicle market is what it is, and that's, that's where we're at with that. We did have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars budgeted in our EAP fund for vehicles for this year. So far, this year's funds, we haven't, we haven't spent any of that money. With approval of these three vehicles, we'd leave a balance of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Questions, commission?
My question, Roger, is, did we ask for a bid without a trade-in?
We did ask for a bid without a trade-in. We have, there's a couple issues with that. That, that would lower them, that would lower the amount that we would have. We didn't get, last year, we got sixty-eight hundred dollars after we, for, for the one twenty-seventeen that we've sold on Purple Wave. We've got, we're getting about thirteen thousand out of these three in trade value. But these vehicles, two of these have more than sixty thousand miles, more than the vehicle we sold last year for sixty-eight hundred dollars, so.
That brings me to my real question then, and that is, the number that we would have, that they're actually quoting per vehicle then would be about, your estimate would be another thirteen thousand dollars?
Of trade, if, if we were to take the trade?
Yeah. So that would put those vehicles at about sixty-eight thousand dollars apiece? Because it's fifty-five thousand right now, with trade.
That's probably not far off.
Now, what about, it says all the equipment and installation. Is this new radios, new equipment and all that, or are we taking the old?
It's a mixture. So, some of the equipment that can't be reused, we'll have to buy new, and some of the, some of it we will repurpose.
Is that included in on this price?
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions of the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
If I might ask one more question before with the bid, what type of vehicles are these?
Both of those were Dodge Durango Pursuit, the Pursuit version of the Durango.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Superior Emergency Response Vehicles in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, including trade.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the bid award for purchase of three twenty-twenty-three Sheriff's Office marked SUVs, twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't know if that delay was a no vote, or?
No, I think it's okay.
It's a delay.
I think that's just a delay.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go with a five oh on that, get clarification. Thank you. Item number three.
Bid award for purchase of two twenty-twenty-three transportation vans for Corrections Division, twenty-twenty-two dash eighteen with Sheriff Roger Solden.
So, this is a, the second of our three. This is for the purchase of two transport vans to replace two twenty-sixteen transit vans we have on the road. Both of those vans are in excess of a hundred and ninety thousand miles, and they get quite a bit of use. We put these out for a sealed bid. We did get one bid back from Long MacArthur of Slayna for seventy-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars with trade in. If we, their best estimate on delivery of these would be four to six months. These would, we'd have to approve this money to go into next year to pay for them. Two hundred and seventy thousand was budgeted after we spent the hundred and sixty-five thousand a few minutes ago on the SUVs. We'd still have a balance of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eight dollars in our EIP funds. We are getting a little more trade value out of these. They're eleven thousand five hundred dollars each is what the trade value is on the vans we're trading in, so.
Questions of the commission? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, including trade. Second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we award the bid for purchase of two twenty-twenty-three transportation vans for Corrections Divisions, twenty-twenty-two dash eighteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Oh, you're still on the, still on the.
You're not quite ready to meet yet.
Not yet. I thought you were out of money.
I'm really close, yeah.
All right, we'll move on to item number four.
Bid award for purchase of one twenty-twenty-three half-ton for Sheriff's Office Maintenance, twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen with Sheriff Roger Solden.
So this is to replace a two thousand and seven Ford F-150 that in its previous life was a patrol car, a patrol unit, and we started having issues with it, and then some number of years ago, we switched it over to a maintenance truck. But it's, it's outlived its life. We, we, one of the guys took some stuff to the dump in it the other day, and didn't think it was going to manage the hills. I'm Burma coming back. It's, we did put out for bids for a new, a new replacement truck for this one. Long MacArthur was the only ones that bid on this vehicle with a bid of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents with trade. And I don't have a note from the captain of what the trade value was, but I can't imagine it was very much. They do estimate a three-to-five month delivery date on this truck, and I'm recommending the purchase for forty, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents. As you noted earlier, Chairman, I, I did spend most of my budget. It's down to, not very much. It's twenty thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-four cents more than what we had requested in the budget. We worked with the county administrator. He said that there is some money in the appropriations budget that won't be spent this year that could be used to cover the additional cost.
My question would be for the administrator, and how do we have money left over in the appropriations budget? Can you elaborate on that?
We double-budgeted one of the interest payments for the radio project that comes out of the same budget. So, there was an interest payment, and then a principal and interest payment, and it's my error, I added the interest payment twice when we were in the budget last year. So there's additional money in that budget that we discovered when we were trying to find money to cover this twenty thousand dollars.
If we're talking four to six months before we, the deliver, three to five months on the delivery, would that not come out of the twenty-twenty-three budget?
If a contract is awarded in the current calendar year, the auditor will encumber the funds into the following year, because under the cash basis law, you have to have cash on hand at the time that you enter into the contract, and then that can carry forward.
I have a question, Mr. Solden. Is that, on this bid here, when you, from Long MacArthur, it says, "Production does not start until October of twenty-twenty-three." That's next year for production.
That's, that was supposed to have been changed.
Okay, sorry, I blew it. Okay.
Yeah, I clarified that when I, because I had the same question, and it's supposed to start in October of twenty-two.
That's, that's interesting, because my copy is changed. It says twenty-twenty-two on it.
Okay. I, I just, okay, thank you, thank you.
Any more questions from the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents, including trade.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we award the bid for purchase of one twenty-twenty-three half-ton pickup for the Sheriff's Office Maintenance, twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number five.
Bid award for twenty-twenty-two realignment construction projects, twenty-twenty-two dash twenty with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So it's kind of the Roger and Justin show today, it seems like, so. So I'm here to request to award the bid for twenty-twenty-two realignment construction projects. Seal bids were open on September fifteenth, and we received six bids. You should have in your packet a, the details of the bid tabs. So my office designed three roadway realignment projects. They are, the first one's on Cunningham Road, south of Stimel Road. Then there was one at the intersection of Stimel Road and Jasper Road. And then the third one was on Gypsum Valley Road, just north of Crawford Street. And so during the twenty-nineteen flooding, each of these locations experienced pretty significant stream bank erosion, and the erosion mitigated or migrated to the roadway. And the erosion mitigated or migrated to the roadway, um, which caused a, uh, an unsafe condition. And so we, we closed the road on each one of these locations. You know, and so with, with this, we added, we added these three projects to our FEMA section four twenty eight projects to, to mitigate, um, to mitigate the erosion. So each of these projects will realign the roadway further away from the channel erosion. Construction may begin as soon as the contracts are finalized, but it must be completed by June of twenty twenty three. Alternatives for action would be to, one, accept the, the bid as indicated in, uh, the staff recommendation. Two would be to accept the bids from a different contract or three, reject the bids and direct staff according to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the unit prices submitted by, uh, MOM Construction for amount of estimated work to equal three hundred and thirty four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty nine cents for all three locations. So each, all of the, each location, we, we bundled them all together, so they're very similar projects. Um, and so we felt that it was gonna, we were gonna get a lot better prices if they were all tied together, so. So that's why you just have the, the one bid. We request that the, uh, funds for the project be taken out of our one twenty four account, which are special road construction or, or one mill. Uh, this account has a current balance of just over one point five million dollars. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes. When this went out, and if I remember right, didn't you go out for some, uh, grants to take care of this?
So, yeah, that, that's the, the section four twenty eight, uh, project with FEMA and through that program. What that does is so I, we took the three locations of the stream bank erosion. And I estimated what it would cost to repair the damage in the stream bank. And then I estimated a project, a cost of what it would take to mitigate, um, that in the future. And then we set, then they, they, they took those two projects and then I think it was ninety percent of the construction cost, um, for those two. And it, it's setting a, a, a price, a fixed price, um, that can't go up. Um, and then what, through that program, what we're able to do is take that money, those funds for those two, um, a correction project and a mitigation project, and we can use those in other areas of the county. And so these three is, um, it's, even though it's in a very same, you know, in the exact same location, it's in a different area as the stream bank. And so that's, that's why it's part of this here. So the, these three locations are part of six locations for, for that four twenty eight.
Okay, so some of those funds did go into this account?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you, that's why.
Yeah, and it's not, well, the funds haven't gone into this account yet. Um, you know, this is the, it's a reimbursement program and so we have to encumber those costs and then get reimbursed for that.
Great, thank you. There's three projects here, Justin, uh, all by the same contractor. Are they gonna complete one project before they start the other? Or?
They were, I, I've, I've talked to them about it. They asked if they could do two projects at the same time. You know, and I told them that they could. You know, so, but they're, you know, they've got working days assigned to each location. And so soon as they start on one location, working days, you know, start to, start to add up. You know, so, but.
Part of my concern is, is that they told us they would be done with, the same contractor said they would be done with the Simpson Road project to start. And, and it was, what, seventy five days later before it was finished? So is, is there gonna be any need for a road closure here?
The, the, well, so I, I said, uh, three of them are, are closed, actually, two of them are already closed. So the, the one on Gypsum Valley and the, uh, intersection of Stimmel Road, those are already closed. And so this, really, this road is just a road that's gonna be constructed out in the field. Um, and so it's really not gonna impact anybody. The one on Cunningham Road, it is, um, it's on a dead end road and it's got access to one house and some, some farm ground. But there, there's a requirement in the contract that the, um, contractor must provide access to those properties at all times. You know, so there's, there's gonna have to be some construction sequencing that's, um, gonna be required in order to, mainly the, the concern is just the emergency services, um, and that, that they can get in and out of that house. But it's, they're gonna have to do it to where they can, they can maintain that access.
And according to this, all projects are to be completed by June of twenty twenty three?
Correct.
Is there a penalty if they're not?
Yes, there's a four hundred dollar per day penalty on that.
And if I remember right, I, this is, there's, there's no riprap or anything going into the eroded areas of this, is it? This is just, we're building a new road further away from this damaged area, right?
Correct, that's correct.
I just, thank you.
Okay. One thing I might mention for, to help myself on these, you have the three bids there, but it's so compressed that it's very hard to read. If, uh, if we could put those each bid on a separate sheet or on a?
Did you get, um, did you get them on by eleven by seventeens?
No.
Oh, okay, so I was, she was supposed to be printing, printing them on eleven by seventeen and it's on, on two sides because of, I tried to make it as, as big as I can without getting into a whole bunch of sheets.
Well, that could happen to worry and then, so.
Yeah, that, that, that would have helped if it was eleven by seventeen. So, yeah, and eight and a half by eleven, yeah, it would get pretty tough to read.
Any more questions or comments?
Yeah, just a comment, but it, it just seems to me like we, I would have liked to have seen this bid two ways. And that is, just like as you have done it, along with, uh, bid each one separate on its own merit and see what happens. But it didn't, so.
And how many bids did you receive?
Six.
Six.
Which was quite a few more than what I was expecting, so that's, I was very happy with those numbers.
That's about all the players in the area.
Yes, plus, yeah, across the state, there were some, you know, um, there was, I know there was one over, you know, in, in Eastern Kansas that, that bid on it.
Well, that's encouraging to hear. If there's no more questions or comments, if the commission is, any questions, comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to MOM Construction Company as presented by staff.
Second, the motion.
It's been moved in second that we award bid for twenty twenty two realignment construction projects twenty twenty two dash twenty. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item number six.
Bid award for Fallen Road RCB Replacement Project twenty twenty two dash twenty one with just a Mater County engineer.
Hello again. So, yeah, so I'm here to, um, request award for the Fallen Road RCB Construction Project. Sealed bids were opened on September fifteenth at eleven AM and we received two bids. Uh, so in your packet, you should have, um, those bid tabs. So you probably have, yeah, eight and a half by eleven, you should be able to see that a little bit better with just the two bids. Uh, so this project is located on Fallen Road, uh, a half a mile east of Burma Road. Uh, this is an asphalt surface road and in the area of the project, uh, that, we've got frequent flooding, um, after a heavy rainfall event where the, the storm waters overtopped the road. Uh, so therefore this was, um, one of the projects that was included in the FEMA section four twenty eight project to improve that level of service. You know, so to, to, to accomplish the goal of, of increasing the level of service, um, what this project includes is raising the existing roadway, uh, nearly two feet in some areas. And then constructing a, a significantly larger, uh, bridge under, under the road to, in a sense, you're taking that water that used to go over the road, now you've gotta put it under. And so that, that takes, um, takes a bigger, bigger drainage structure. And so with this project, we're looking at, um, you know, taking it from overtopping, you know, once every year, uh, to once every ten years. And so that was, that was the, um, kind of our goal, goal for this project. So, but due to the asphalt pavement on this project, uh, the contractor can't begin construction until January thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Um, and have to have, and, but they must have it completed by again that, that June of twenty twenty three. And so I didn't want the contractor, you know, the bridge contractor to start too early. And then when they're, because that's what happens is if we let them start too early, they're gonna have the, the bridge done and all the grading done and they're ready for asphalt. But it's February, um, you know, and so there's no asphalt available in February. So if they start in January, so that gives them several months of bridge construction and grading to where they'll have, they'll be ready for asphalt right there in early spring when the asphalt plants are, are, are firing up. So that's why those dates are selected. Alternatives for action is to accept a bid, uh, as indicated in staff recommendation. Uh, accept the bids from a different contract or reject the bids and direct staff according to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the unit prices from the bid submitted by Reese Construction for amount of estimated work to equal five hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars and nineteen cents. Um, and we're requesting that the funds for this project be taken out of the one twenty five account, the special bridge construction or the two mil. Uh, this account has a current balance of around two point five million dollars. Any questions?
One question, th- this road then will be possibly closed for six months?
Yes, so that's, that's about what it, it takes for, um, for a, a, a bridge project is, you know, usually if it's a bridge project on a gravel road, it's anywhere from, you know, two, uh, two to two and a half months. But there's quite a bit of road construction with this. You know, so there's a pretty big area, long length of road that we're, we're raising it up. So we gotta give that little extra time to get that grading done. And then, um, for the surfacing, we're, we're gonna put aggregate base down first, we're gonna put eight inches of aggregate base and then the asphalt on top of that. So it just takes a little more time. You're dealing with different contractors, different subcontractors, um, you know, so there's also that sequencing in there. So hopefully it's less than that. You know, but that's, that's about what we're, we're looking at. And again, there's liquidated damages, um, you know, attached to the contract. Of, uh, probably the four hundred dollars per day is what our typical liquidated damages are.
Any more questions from the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Reese Construction Company for an amount of estimated work equal to five hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars and nineteen cents.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we award bid for Fallen Road RCB Replacement Project twenty twenty two dash twenty one. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Hang around, Justin. Item number seven.
Bid award for twenty twenty two pipelining project twenty twenty two dash twenty two with just a Mater County engineer.
So we, we opened bids on September sixth for twenty twenty two pipelining project. Uh, we received four bids. So in your packet, you should have, um, a, a title sheet, uh, which shows the locations of the projects. Hope, but it's probably, if it's on eight and a half by eleven, it might be a little bit difficult to see. Uh, but then you also have the, um, uh, the bid tabs, which will give that, kind of the details, details of the bid. So we, we selected twelve pipe locations along Brookville Road and State Street, uh, for a, a base bid with three additional locations of broken back projects as add alternate bids. Uh, each of these locations involves aligning the existing pipe with either a HDPE, which is a high density polyethylene pipe, or a cured in place liner. Uh, so last year, uh, we had a project where we rehabilitated, uh, eleven pipes along Brookville Road using the Omega Cured In Place Regan, um, resin impregnated liner. I did bring a, a, a sample of what we did. So this, this material here is what was, um, it was very pliable at the time. You know, they pulled it through the, the pipe, they, they blew it up with air. And then, um, this product was cured with ultraviolet light. And so this is what we did last year, was very successful project. So for, for this year, uh, Mayor Specialty Services was, uh, the low bid. Uh, and they proposed to rehabilitate eleven pipes with the fold-in form PVC liner and three pipes with a, the three largest pipes, the broken back pipes with a centrifugally cast concrete liner. Uh, and so with the, the PVC liner, it's gonna be very similar process where it's gonna be a, you know, almost like a long sock that they pull through the pipe. They will expand it with air, but their, um, their liner is cured with steam. And so they'll add steam into there. Um, and, but then once it's cured, it's, but it's, it's a PVC pipe, it's not gonna be this, this resin pipe. It's just gonna be PVC. Um, with the centrifugally cast liner, what that process is, is so they, there's a device that they'll pull through the existing pipe. Uh, but what it does is it, in a sense, slings concrete, it's like a eight thousand PSA concrete, so it's a pretty strong concrete. And it's got, um, uh, fibers in there, uh, for the, the structural strength as well. And so, but what it does is it just slings this concrete and it, it, at a very specific rate, you know, it's pulled through at a very specific rate. So you get a uniform thickness of concrete inside of the existing liner. And so when you're done, you've got a concrete pipe, uh, when you're done. So, um, you know, I did call around on some references and the city of, uh, Hayes. They've, they've been doing this since two thousand and eleven and they've been pretty happy, um, happy with this process. And he says they'll probably continue doing this, that process in the city of Hayes, so. So that was a little bid and so that's kind of my recommendation, you know, is to award the unit prices from Mayor Specialty Services for the twelve base bid pipe locations and the three add alternate locations. Uh, another alternative for action would be to accept a bid from a different contractor or reject a bid and direct staff, uh, to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends to accept a bid from Mayor Specialty Services for pipelining at fifteen locations for an estimated cost of four hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and eighty six dollars. Funds for this project will be taken, uh, from the one twenty five account, special bridge construction or two mil, uh, which has a current balance of around two and a half million dollars. Questions?
And the, the large benefit from this is that there's very minimal traffic disruption?
Yes, that's the, the biggest thing, um, yeah, well, there's two, two things that, that a project like this really benefits is one, yeah, you're, you're, um, you're not closing a road to traffic. So during construction, during the daylight hours, there will be like a lane closure because they have to set equipment up on the road in order to, to do work. You know, but, but you'll still have traffic go through there. And two is you don't have to cut the existing asphalt. You know, and so that's, that's where there's always issues where you cut the asphalt and no matter what you do, backfilling after you replace the pipe, you backfill that and you put asphalt back in there, you're always gonna have a bump there. You're always gonna have an issue that you've gotta deal with. So, um, with those, those two issues, um, just, they go away, um, with these lining projects.
Quick question here is, is, what's the difference with the PVC and that, the liner that you used last year?
So, so this here, this liner, you know, which of course is, is made from a different company, um, and installed by a different contractor, you know, this is a, of, um, resin impregnated fiberglass. Um, and so the, um, that, uh, let's see here, was it the eleven sites? When they're done, it's in a sense, it's gonna be a PVC pipe.
And I know that last year when, excuse me, but last year when we did those, I know that was the first time the county had used that product. And it was kind of a test deal and we use that now. We're go, getting back into the same scenario, we've never did either one of these before, right? So we're, now we're doing some more testing just to see if these are gonna work also.
That's, that's correct, so, you know, and if, if, if the bids were a little bit closer, I probably would have, have recommended going back with this project, even though it costs a little bit more. You know, cause I, I think this, the product that we did last year is gonna be a lot better than a PVC pipe. You know, but I think the, the bid differences was like a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And so that was just a little bit much for me to, to recommend using, using this product here.
Justin, your map, uh, doesn't show the location of these, of these projects that are, that are included. Uh, there's, the map, I assume is the five that are identified here on this map are for twenty twenty two, we've already done them, is that correct?
No, so, so what we do is the, the date that we put on there is the date that we bid the project. bid the project, not construction.
Okay. Well, there's only five sites identified here and you're, you're telling us you want, what 15? Where's the number?
Yeah, there's 15. There should be along the, the sides of the, the map. You should have the different, different locations.
Right. But there, he's saying that this is on Brookville Road and there's only five on Brookville Road.
Brookville Road and State Street.
Okay.
So what, what we did is last year, you know, because this was last year was our very first pipelining project. We just took the very worst pipes on Brookville Road. It's like, okay, we've got to do something with these here. And that's what we did. And so now what we're doing is we're going back and, and kind of filling in the gaps, you know, hitting those pipes that were not as bad, but they still need to be done. And so we're filling in those. And now we're working along State Street. And then if you would allow me, I would like to be doing these each year. And so we'll, you know, we'll work down State Street. We've got pipes, you know, going up Headville Road, Halsted Road. I mean, we've got, we've got these, this issue all over where, you know, we've got corrugated metal pipes that there's, there's no bottom to them. It's completely rusted out. And it's actually, there's some of them where it's so bad where it's starting to, to scour the soil underneath of the pipe. You know, so it's, we've, we've, we've got a pretty, pretty big issue.
Well, I would like to let you do all of those. But on the other hand, this is a million bucks here in one year and, and a very short span of time, but a very short, only a couple of miles of road here too, really is what it amounts to. So I don't, I don't see how we can afford to do that each and every time. I mean, we're talking a million dollars, real close to a million bucks for this year alone for those, it's like one, two, about four miles of road.
Any more questions from the commission?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not too, I, I'm just having a hard time with you, with your question because the, the bid here for 15 locations estimated cost is $424,000. Where we, where are you getting a million dollars at? That's what I'm having a hard time.
Excuse me, Roger. I, I added in the bridge, bridge project too on Fallen Road. You're right.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. Just couldn't, couldn't see where we.
We're spending a million dollars, just not all on the same project. That's where I'm, yeah. Thanks for the clarification or question.
Yeah. Okay.
And the, the 125 account, the, the two mil, you know, of course brings in two mil and it's about, brings in about 1.2, 1.3 million each year.
Just to thank you because that would be just probably another question. When you spin that concrete and stuff and it's like, if you don't have any bottom there, is that concrete, if, if it's a dirt bottom, is it still going to?
What they have to do is, is, you know, because there's always pipe cleanings on each one of these. They got to make sure the pipe's clean. And if there's voids in, anywhere on the, on the, around the pipe, they've got to fill that with a grout, a cement grout first. So they got to fill that out there and then they'll, they'll do the concrete
Okay.
Above that. So.
I'm sorry. When it's like, how would they?
Yeah. So, you know, with, with each one of these, you know, you're always kind of, on your very first projects with material, you know, you're a little uncomfortable until you get experience with them. So I've, I've done quite a bit of research and, and I'm asked a lot of questions and I've probably drug this out longer than what the contractor wanted, wanted for me to drag it out. But I wanted to make sure that this is, my recommendation was, was, I was about as comfortable as I can, can get. So I've done a fair amount of research.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Meyer, Meyer Specialty Services for pipelining at 15 locations for an estimated cost of $424,286.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we award the bid for 2022 pipelining project 2022-22. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, we'll move to item number eight. Thank you, Justin.
Update and proposed changes for ARPA funding 2022-16 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is a continuing series of informational items about our American Rescue Plan Act implementation here in Salina County. Number of changes proposed today, but the net effect of those changes harkens back to our first presentation, which is to reduce the amount of money that we're, that we're committing at current times. So the first recommendation is to reduce the first year costs for the Choose Salina County app. The app continues to make great progress, but the reality is we're just not going to spend as much this first year as what we had budgeted. And so I have talked with the app developers from Kolu and they are comfortable reducing the amount of business reimbursements by $50,000 and then cutting the processing costs in half. We still have funds reserved for the next two years. So this doesn't affect the project. It's just sort of realigning the budget to get back in, closer to, to what we think we're actually going to spend, allowing us to do other things. The second one is to cancel a grant that you awarded on August 16th to the Salina Emergency Aid Food Bank. This is actually good news. They secured other funding for this project. And so they sent us a letter saying thank you, but, but we don't want to accept the grant at this time. So that frees up $23,350. The third recommendation is to change the contemplated projects for business support with the Salina Area Chamber. We have been holding money for a potential relocation project that the chamber had proposed to us and wasn't quite ready for prime time. We were having discussions with them. In the meantime, they came up with a couple of other projects that they feel are a little more critical to get business development running sooner. And North Central Regional Planning Commission has actually implemented a relocation program through some funding that they have. So relocation program is sort of covered without the county having to utilize any of our ARPA funding. And the chamber has come back with two projects. The first being an incubator space in the downtown area for potential new retail and eatery concepts. So this is to secure a space that would house projects that are in their infancy before they are ready to go out on their own and, and commit to leasing a large space. The idea is that the downtown area has many similar concepts in terms of small retail. And so you would not duplicate anything that's already downtown. You would open this up for people who wish to do something a little different than what is, is currently being done. That project has an estimated cost of $350,000 over three years. The other project that they have proposed is an API, which Lauren could explain in detail what that is, but it's some fancy web thing to help with the Imagine Salina website be able to host jobs directly on the site rather than redirect people to a third-party job hosting site, which is what they do now. Not all industries in the community use the same third-party websites for jobs. And so when you look at Imagine Salina, you see, oh, there are all these openings in healthcare, but then if you click on them, healthcare does not use Indeed.com, which is what Imagine Salina redirects to. And so you don't see those jobs. And so that's, that's a disconnect. And doing this investment in this API would allow for those jobs to be posted directly on the Imagine Salina website. And we're hoping attract, you know, one, one more, one more arrow in our quiver in the war for talent, I guess you would say. And that cost is $34,500, which would allow them to do that for up to four years. The next change is to cancel a previous grant award to Sundowner Incorporated. This was awarded back in December of 2021 as part of our first round of water and wastewater infrastructure grant funding. And that organization has just been non-responsive. We've tried numerous times to get them to complete the grant paperwork and, and feel like that we just need to move on. Also on the water and wastewater grant side, one of the second round water and wastewater infrastructure grants was to Saline Rural Water District number seven. Their project has changed a little bit. And so they're seeking a reduced grant amount of $47,000 rather than the, the $50,000 that they had originally applied for back 10 months ago. The next item is to sign task order number two with iParametrics. So if you'll recall, when ARPA first became a reality, we went out and did an RFQ to secure consulting services, somebody who knows all the ins and outs of federal compliance, procurement, et cetera. And in May of 2021, you awarded a contract for ARPA consulting services to iParametrics. At the same time, you also approved the first task order. That has gotten us through 16 months of program development, but that money is running low. So we're asking for the second task order in the same amount. We would also then like to cancel the river cleanup project that we had contemplated and instead put some more money towards small expenses. If you'll recall, on September 6th, the commission approved use of some road and bridge equipment to facilitate a community cleanup in North Salina. That was part of a collaborative effort with the city of Salina, North Salina Community Development, a couple of other agencies. North Salina had talked to us several months ago about the potential of this. We put some funding aside for it. Turns out through the collaboration, it cost far less than we anticipated. So this would free up about $12,000 in funding. And then finally, the recommendation is to grant $50,000 to the city of Salina to assist with road improvement plans, particularly on Magnolia between I-135 and Centennial Road. So back in June, the commission did put aside $50,000 of our ARPA funding for planning for joint road projects. We had contemplated a few different possibilities around that. One was, was Magnolia Road. Another was on Holmes. And then there, you know, were some, some other potentials, including a possible project with Dickinson County. The Magnolia project between 135 and Centennial is sort of the first one to get going. The city commission has awarded a contract in the amount of $248,714. And so the city manager has requested that they would like us to play in that if we would be so willing. So that is, those are all the changes recommended. Just a few general sort of updates. We had talked to the commission about a potential project on Magnolia east of Kip Road, going into Dickinson County and improving that from a gravel road to a paved road. Met the, the Dickinson County Administrator and I met and talked with Justin Mater about the potential costs for that. And Dickinson County Administrator took that back to the Dickinson County Board of Commissioners. They are, in view of the costs, they're probably not looking to move forward with that right now. So that's still something that's out there that we're interested in, but probably not spending ARPA funds on it right now. There are a couple of other things that, you know, as we continue to work through our, our projects that are coming in below budget. In particular, one of the projects you approved was county employee development. And one of those projects, which was sending some folks to the Transforming Local Government Conference, that came in a little bit under budget. So I'll bring that back in a future report and, and clean that up. There are a number of projects where we are still waiting on, you know, various partners. Broadband, we continue to meet. I think we have another meeting next week with our broadband committee. But the state, we applied, as you know, we applied for funding from the state for some broadband projects. And the state is sort of slow walking, I guess, deployment of some of those. They requested some public comment. And we're also still waiting on the childcare group here in town to bring us a proposal for spending some of that money. Kansas State University, we have two potential projects with K-State Salina. Those are, are held up in contract issues with the main campus in Manhattan. And the co-responder project, we're, we're working through the final details on the MOU on that. So a lot going on with respect to ARPA, but the recommendation today is to make those changes that I outlined earlier. And the net is that that would reduce our committed expenditures by just over $100,000. I will have a couple more things to talk about in my county administrator update, but for now I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My, my question regarding the Magnolia Road with Dickinson County, it was my understanding that that has, it has a timeframe for the ARPA funds to be available if, to, to do that project. Would that be correct? So in other words, what I'm asking is if Dickinson County says no at this time, that, that grant funding will go away?
So the contemplation was actually to apply for bipartisan infrastructure law funding on that, but to use ARPA funding to get our engineering, our preliminary engineering done to start with, in, in order to be able, you know, to have all the ducks in a row to apply for the bill funding when it becomes available. So ARPA, as you know, we have to spend those funds by the end of, we have to commit them all by the end of December of '24 and spend them all by the end of '26. Bipartisan infrastructure law is a five-year period. So the timeframes are similar. Dickinson County, my understanding is they've already committed their ARPA funding. And so for them to pay their portion of the engineering, they would have had to reduce one of their other planned projects that they wanted to do. And, and they were not inclined to do that. So for us, it would be, you know, juggling around things within ARPA. For them, it would be coming up with additional new. For them, it would be coming up with additional new money. That doesn't mean that we're not still looking at the project. One of the possibilities is the bipartisan infrastructure law does include some funding for project planning, so we could potentially apply for a grant to do the stuff that we thought we were going to do from ARPA and then apply for the big money. That just, that's still a possibility, but it just pushes it out and further into the future.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me like Dickinson County is going to be the one that really benefits from this because the people that use that road, I mean, it'd be nice for Cline County to have that road paved, it really would be. But the people that would be using that road that would benefit from it would be the Southern Dickinson County people that come to Salina to work, and therefore they wouldn't have to go K-4 to go south or maybe Marymount Road, Country Club Road coming in. So, I mean, it looks to me like they should try a little harder to make this project work if we're willing to do it, and I'd like to see them try a little harder.
That brings up a question. Speaking of Magnolia Road, the 35 to Centennial, have bipartisan funding, is that being requested for this since there are three different entities that are involved?
So this is basically the same thing that I just described. So the City of Salina has committed some of their funding to getting the preliminary engineering done. They would like us to play in that. That's, the request is to contribute our $50,000 towards that. And then the hope is, what that results in is a study that could then be used to go after the bipartisan infrastructure funding.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Questions?
Oh, excuse me.
No, go.
Okay, just a quick, on the replacement, relocation, incentive allocation, funds it here. I don't know, I just, it's hard for me to imagine that we want to allocate funds to play in the downtown arena thinking that if somebody wants to just try something, that these funds are going to be available for that, when isn't that what the, and I'm not for sure, but the, the old, the Isis Shrine Tower, I mean, where that's at, that building is, isn't that kind of a building being utilized for that same type of purpose where people can go in there and kind of try something to see if this is what they want to go do?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the temple that you're referring to is, it is a co-working space. And I actually had the same question when Renee and Eric brought this concept up. I said, well, why aren't you just redirecting people to the temple? And they said, well, the temple is really geared more towards professional businesses and that sort of thing where there's not really a storefront presence because if you, if you've been around the temple, there's not a, it's not really a good retail entrance to that. And so this would be specifically to businesses that need more of a street-facing presence and more retail-oriented things. Temple is not really set up for retail. But yeah, I mean, I had that same concept, the same question.
Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the programs as outlined.
Second.
Good news, and secondly, we approve, update, and propose changes for ARPA funding 2022-16. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. All right, that wraps up our action items. We now move into informational items. Item number one.
Committee Corrections Department Update, September 2022, 22-23. Michelle Callen, Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Michelle. Is this your first time reporting to us?
This is my first time, yes.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I am going to give a little overview and update on our department, going back to March of this year. As you all know, I took over as Director of the agency on July 11th when our former Director, Annie Grievous, retired. We have had some staffing changes in our agency, so we have a couple of positions that are currently open within the agency. We're looking to fill those, and we'll be starting on our interviews Thursday. In July, we were awarded with the 2022 Criminal Justice and Public Safety Best in Category winner for innovative work because of our work with UpTrust, which is a system that we use to notify our clients when they have court dates or appointments. And so we have implemented that over the last, seems like, a couple of years. And we were, we actually got an award. And our county Administrator, Phil Smith Haynes, was in attendance, and he received that award and brought it back to us, and we have it displayed in our office. So we continue to work with UpTrust to develop that and make adjustments to that software so that it fits the needs of our office because we have a lot of different things going on there, so each one of our divisions need a little bit different take on that, on that software. We have applied for the Burn Memorial Justice Grant, which we call the JAG grant, to assist with funding for this program. So the supervisors in my office that assisted with that, we are anxiously waiting to see when that hearing will be because we intend to attend that hearing in Topeka in person. I heard through the grapevine that if you are there in person, that it's good. So we're going to go and attend that. Last year, we watched it from afar, so we're going to go and attend that hearing later. Currently, our staff is supervising approximately 398 clients in our Adult Intensive Supervision Division. That includes our active and our inactive cases. So we have some inactive cases that may be in treatment or in jail or maybe out on a courtesy supervision in another county. It also includes 96 of our clients that participate in our drug court program. We have approximately 142 clients in our pretrial program. We have 132 clients in our various programs that encompass our juvenile division. We also have a juvenile intake and assessment portion too on our juvenile side that we have assisted with approximately 160 clients through that program. That would include clients who are going, or our young clients who are going into PPC custody, child in need of care, our juvenile offenders who come in through the juvenile intake and assessment program. So we are a very busy office. We have a lot of people in and out. We also continue to offer our in-house cognitive-based programs on both our juvenile and our adult divisions. And we do that to assist clients in breaking down barriers. It helps us to not have to, if we have clients who have participated in a lot of programs in the community and maybe they have some barriers there, it gives us another outlet and another avenue that we can use to assist those clients with cognitive-based programs. So our plans for the future, at least for the next foreseeable future, we have several people who are going to training. Andrew Pellant just came back from training on pretrial. Alex Tyson is leaving to go to some training this week as well, looking for innovative ways that we can improve our agency and better serve our community, and also looking for some other funding outlets that we might be able to tap into. The five-member supervisory staff that we have, we are all participating in the National Association of Counties Professional Development Academy. We are all very excited to have been given this opportunity. I actually heard about it at the department head meeting. Hannah had brought it up, and when I heard about it, I was like, I want to do that because I'm new and this will be great. So the five of us got enrolled. We started in September, and we were shocked by the amount of time that it actually takes to do that. But the first week was terrible, and now we've kind of settled into it, and it's not quite so bad. And we'll continue to do that. It's an online course that we kind of do as we can during the course of day. Sometimes we do it on the weekends or at night, whatever. We're all exempt, so we just do it whenever we can. And we have, then we have a cohort that we belong to, and we meet online with those people, and then we have kind of a wrap-up session every week. And that will continue for the five of us through December. So I believe that all of us have already learned some things about leadership skills that we are excited, and we're excited to go forward with that. For the budget update, we were originally flat-funded from KDOC for FY23, but we were awarded additional funds for personnel costs due to some actions that were taken by the state legislature. Our FY23 expenses are within expected ranges, so we have no concerns at this time. Everything seems to be going along. Any questions?
Questions with Michelle?
No.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
You bet. Good, item number two.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again. So as I mentioned in my ARPA update, there are a couple things that I wanted to talk about in this update that also have relationships to ARPA. So for starters, last week, I was not here. I attended the ICMA Annual Conference in Columbus, Ohio, and was excited, that conference always has lots of good programs, but in particular, probably the best session I attended was one from a municipality in Texas that has a comprehensive leadership development program for their employees, and they actually produced like a 28-page booklet of how to do it that I was able to bring back and will be working through. So excited about that. But the ARPA connection to that conference was, one of the programs that your commission has previously approved is a mental health text messaging platform called Copnotes. And Copnotes was in attendance at the conference, and they gave Cline County a shout-out for being one of the pioneer counties around the country to utilize their software. So that was very nice. The other news that I wanted to talk about is just before I left for the conference, I sat in, attended remotely, the State Spark Committee meeting. If you'll recall, way back in like March or February, the commission had a special meeting at which you authorized staff to apply for some housing funding on behalf of K-State Salina and Kansas Wesleyan. And we did that, we put in a couple different applications through the state, but one of them was through this Spark Idea Submission process. And we've heard nothing for months and months and months and months and months, and then all of a sudden, two weeks ago, they said, oh, hey, we're having a meeting about that stuff that you applied four months ago. And I have to say, it was a little anticlimactic. The State Spark Committee did allocate $374 million in funding. Economic revitalization, which would include things like housing, got $130 million of that, which was the highest amount of the different categories, but also the lowest in comparison to the total that had been requested through that process. So the next step is that the recommendations from the Spark Committee have to get approved by the State Finance Council, so we're waiting to hear when that will occur. And then state agencies will be tasked with actually pushing that out. So we don't know whether we'll get any of that funding, but I guess it's not dead yet is the upshot for that. So those were the two updates I had for today, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of the Administrator? Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three.
Commissioners' Comments.
I guess this could come under the last part, too, questions to you, but in reviewing the things for the road improvements and so forth for the city, and what has ever happened to the Centennial Road Agreement that we entered into or tried to enter into, what, a year ago or more?
Yeah. It's still out there. The city is fully aware of it. They have, they have backburnered it a little bit because they're focused on, in their world, the Centennial improvements are a part of the economic incentives related to Schwan's and their expansion, and so they have been focused on other pieces of that. And Centennial is sort of the last part of that, I guess you would say. I ask about it periodically, and they say, yeah, we know, we still owe you that. Yeah, yeah, we still want the money, we'll give you something. But they haven't been particularly focused on it lately.
That's a pretty good chunk of change, if I remember right.
It's about $400,000, I believe, so.
How much?
I think it was 400.
Okay, what happened? Does that money just stay in limbo somewhere on a cloud, you know, type thing?
It's, it's part of the one mil, so, I mean, it's there until we spend it or until we commit it to something else.
I'm just thinking, does that mean we can just say no and pull it back one of these days?
Well, I think certainly if the project does not move forward, we could recommit it to something else, and yeah, that's probably a decision for the body to make at some point in the future.
Any other comments from the commission? Now, good, item number four.
Announcements.
Seeing none, I see we have a couple executive sessions here on the agenda.
Yes, sir. To start with, staff would request that the commission recess into executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss recent mediation for 15 minutes and reconvene at 10:37 in this room.
So moved.
Could I ask for like a three-minute recess before?
Reconvene at 10:40, it is.
Okay, thank you. Second, the motion.
All right, so moving to second, the commission going to executive session for employer-employee negotiations for 18 minutes and reconvene at 10:40. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
All right, it is 10:53. We're out of executive session. No action was taken. I see nothing else on our agenda.
Oh, yes, there is.
Oh, I forgot. Something important, maybe.
Important to some of us. Mr. Chairman, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, to discuss the county administrator's evaluation for 20 minutes and reconvene in this room at 11:13.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved second. We go into executive session for non-elected personnel and reconvene at, time again, 11:13. All those in favor say aye.
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 Sir.
Motion carries.
All right, it is 10:53. We're out of executive session. No action was taken. I've seen nothing else on our agenda.
Oh, yes, there is.
Oh, I forgot. Something important, maybe.
Important to some of us. Mr. Chairman, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, to discuss the county administrators' evaluation for 20 minutes and reconvene in this room at 11:13.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved second. We go into executive session for non-elected personnel and reconvene at, time again, 11:13. All those in favor say aye.
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 Certain.
Motion carried.
There was no action taken in this executive session. I don't believe we have any other business, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We move second. We adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. We're adjourned.